Mute, that's my video. That's my video. I see. Well done. Alright. Yes. So if you hover over my face, it should show you three little dots on the top right of my face. And if you click those dots, you can make me the host. Not the co-host, just make me the host, host. No, not co-host, regular host. Yeah. Who's IT Matters has entered the waiting room for this meeting? Hello. Hi Eric. My name's Alex, so I'm gonna be running the meeting for Steve today. I can't hear you, hold on. Eric, can you hear me? Steve, you made me the host, so you can get out of the meeting now if you want. Yeah, I can hear you.
Hello, everybody. Good evening.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening. Just admitting everybody now.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Hello.
Steve.
Hi, Mary.
Hi, Mary.
Hi.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
You hear me now, Mary?
I can hear you.
Well, how are you?
I'm good. How sunny. Hey, Jerry's here.
Yeah.
Gaines here. Where's Eric and Mike? Eric and Mike. Carrie.
Hi, Mary.
Hi, Carrie. And Mark, I see Mark.
Hello.
Perfect, everyone's here.
All right, we got two, we got two minutes before we start, but I know Steve, Steve Honing's not on tonight, I think. Alec, you're taking over, correct?
Yes, I'm here for Steve Honing. Last name is Shaw.
Hey, Alex, before we get started, a little housekeeping, I know what we usually do before, you know, once the meeting starts is we suppress everyone's camera except for the board members, the consultants, the engineers, and mute, and mute all their mics, and then once we start the public hearing, if a member of the audience wants to raise their hand, we'll recognize them, you'll, you know, unmute them from their mic, so, you know, if the, if some of the the public, if they don't see themselves, you know, we're gonna start muting and just
Hearing off videos.
Yeah, turn, you can turn off the videos.
Alec?
Yes.
Jennifer, Jennifer Johnson is our court reporter, so don't unmute her, don't mute her.
Got it.
Okay?
All right, if I, if I close anyone's video or I mute anyone that I shouldn't be muting, please let me know.
Yeah, I'll tell you when.
I'm turning off Eric J's video, not Mark's, I'm turning off Manuel Andrade's video.
Right, Eric and, Eric and Mike, you need to turn back on.
Oh, okay.
That's okay.
All right, and then Carrie's, I'm turning off, right?
No, Carrie, you stay on. Kevin, you can turn off, Nancy Barbuto, you could turn off.
Nancy, turn off, and Kevin, you said, okay?
Right, and I think yeah, I think that's, let me see, there's
We're waiting for Max.
We're waiting for Max, correct?
I think Max is coming in right now, he's in the waiting room.
You know what, I, let me just say this, this is the first time I was able at this point to see other participants other than board members, may not have seen their faces, but I see who's on there, which I personally kind of like.
Well, it kind of takes from the the whole Zoom, sometimes it bogs it down, we do that at work, sometimes if you have too many videos on, it kind of slows things down.
Yeah, it eats up a lot of the
It eats up, yeah.
It makes it a, it makes it a pixelate a little bit more, it garbles up the audio as well sometimes.
Tell you one thing, Tom, you're not coming in there clear to me personally. Now you are, would you, when this gentleman
He goes in and out all the time.
Oh.
It's Natalie, it's him.
It's him.
I think that's that patriotic background he has.
That looks good, he don't.
Hey, well, you know what, let me turn this one light off, hang on.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a little better, not much.
Thank God, I look better than you.
Hey, good.
I'm not red.
All right, do I, do we have everyone?
Yes, I think we have everyone, we have Max, we have John, we have the whole board, and we have Alec, and we have Jennifer.
And we have Jennifer, good. All right, what we'll do is we'll start then. I'll put my, I'll put my flag up so we can do the pledge. All right, there I am. All right, we'll do the pledge, stand, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Mayor, just call, call the role, please.
Okay, Gene Crace?
Yes.
Jerry Rogers?
Here.
Eric?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
Carrie?
Here.
Mark? Tom?
Here. All right, we got a full board, we got everyone. All right, well, we'll start the meeting. Tonight's agenda, we have a few public hearings on, so let me get to that. The first item on the agenda for the first public hearing will be Nine Holt Drive, and this is located on the south side of Holt Drive. And just to get started was, when we open the public hearing, and if you have, if you have comments to make, you'll just raise your hand, Alex will recognize you, undo your microphone, and what we could do is, you know, you'll state your name, address for the record, and leave your comments just for the the item on the agenda, and just for those who haven't been to a public hearing, it's not a question and answer session, is if you have any questions or comments, you just make them, and then they'll get answered probably at the next board meeting or in some response from the applicant. All right, so this time, we'll do the nine halt. Who's doing nine halt, is that you, Dave?
Yes. I'm ready, can anybody hear me?
Dave Ziegler, you, Dave Ziegler, you could put on. Where are you, Dave?
I got
Right here.
Right down.
All right, there you are.
Dave, I just asked you to start your video if you can.
There you go.
Gotcha.
I don't want to scare you, Alex.
All right, Dave, give us an update.
Basically, we started this public hearing in October, and at that time, we had comments from John O'Rourke, and right after the meeting, we received comments from Rockland County Planner, so we revised the maps, made a comment and response, and unfortunately, the first five comments of John O'Rourke's was not on it, so I have to do an addendum to that, to the submission. We made this mission just last week, so there hasn't been time to review them, but I believe we answered all the questions that John had for the drafting, and then he has to review the SWIP, we provided the SWIP book, and if there's any questions, I'm available now, and if not, I would ask the board to continue to the public hearing until next month, and that'll give time for everybody to review the maps.
All right, good, Dave, thanks. Does any of the board have any questions, or, John, before I open the public hearing?
Yeah, as Dave said, we did get his submission, excuse me, non-covid, covid caught. So, yeah, we're in the middle of reviewing that, I would expect to have comments probably by next week, I'll call Dave directly if I have any specific ones, but as he stated, we're reviewing those, so we're pretty well set at the moment.
All right, good. All right, what I'll do at this time, I'll open the public hearing for nine halt, I just need a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second it.
Second, all in favor? Good, all right, so open the public hearing, if you have any comments on nine halt, just raise, raise your hand, and it should be on the lower right hand in the Zoom, and then Alex will identify you and unmute you, so at this time, we'll open nine halt. You see anything, Alec?
I don't see anyone with their hands raised.
All right, I don't see anything either. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue the public hearing.
All right, I got a motion that we're going to continue the public hearing to the next available meeting, which would be January 28th, right, correct, Mayor?
Yes, I don't, I don't have a January calendar yet.
I have, and I think it should be January, I hope, January 28th.
I have, one, two, one, two, three, twenty-eight.
Yeah, all right, I have a motion, I'll do the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, so we'll continue to the 28th, Dave.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, I think you're on again.
Yes.
Second public hearing, same, this is Town Line, and this is located on the side side of Holt Drive, too, it's a continued public hearing. Dave, go ahead.
No, I believe that this is opening the public hearing, I don't think this was a public hearing at the last meeting.
You're right, I'm sorry, this is, we're opening the public hearing.
Right. So Town Line is a sort of like a flex, a flex use, it's a storage, storage warehouse facility on Holt Drive, down at the east end where the road turns. There's a lot back in the corner by the railroad, and we were in front of the board about 12 years ago, I guess, and we had a a plan, we went for variances, we went to the ARB. We also had all the comments finished, and it got tangled up in a lawsuit, and over that time, the applicant owner went to the ZBA and requested a continuance of the site plan, so it didn't end, it didn't die from old age, it was continued forever until the New York State DEC was going to issue a permit on the drainage, well, that never happened, so we're back in. It's the same plan. These warehouses, they're small, they're 2,500 square foot, they have a human door in the front with parking, and then in the back, they have a garage door and a dock, and another human door, and then there's parking around the outside of the perimeter of the property, and then the property is set up by a retaining wall, so it's set higher than it is now by about three to four foot in some areas, mostly four, and then on the residential side, on the south side, because remember it was Tavistrows Residential, we have a buffer, a landscape berm, and all this was reviewed, it's the same thing, but the code has changed in a few of the areas, so we had to really redo the maps. We also had to redo the drainage. I think, believe, Steve Mandrake is online, because that was what was, the lawsuit was involved with, and the drainage comes out of this site and goes due north through the parking lot of where the church and the gym and the McGee offices into the lot all the way to the north end, so right now, that's a proposal on our part to replace the old pipe through, through the private property, I'll quote it as McGee's, and then put two new pipes in, and that would be the collector and the main for Holt Drive drainage, and also for this site. A few of the other sites up the street actually drained a little bit into the road, but most of the other sites are self-contained because there's so much sand around the area. Shoprite and Hudson Bay, they are collected in another pipe, and that is off to the north, so that's not included in this site. So the site itself, you would enter in off the road and either go to the back or the front of the buildings, and there's a loop around the entire site. Right now, we have comments, we're revising the maps. We're also updating it to some of the code changes in the last 12 years, and then we got comments from the county on it, and they didn't quite understand the lawsuit portion of it, so they made some comments on the variances and things, so we have quite a bit of comments from the county that we have to address. And then, of course, Steve Mandrake has to talk to Steve Honing about the legal aspects of it, because the drainage is that's being installed by this applicant will be dedicated to the town because it's the drainage off of Holt Drive. So we are asked to have the public hearing just to see if there's any comments, because it is a new project, and if the board doesn't get any comments, we would ask you to continue the meeting, so we could respond to the county planner's comments. We also have county highway comments, which is a little odd, because we're about 1,000 foot from the state highway, and we would have to address John, John O'Rourke's comments, and Max had a couple, so if the board has any questions, or the public does, we'll respond to them, but we would ask for the continuation of the meeting.
All right, thanks, Dave. Before we get to the pub, the, the public hearing, John, any comments, or do you want to?
Just reiterating what Dave said, it really relates down to the legal aspect of the off-site drainage. Again, we had given Dave comments on both the off-site drainage and onsite, which he's addressing, so until the legal issue is resolved, which is, again, more paperwork, but the design generally works, yeah, we're kind of on hold.
All right, good. Does any of the board have any questions before I get to the public hearing?
All right.
Hold on.
Okay, Jane.
Dave, your first comments were, you had a problem with the DEC with the permit from the beginning, is that been resolved?
No, it had to do with, it had to do with the applicant trying to extend the drainage line through that northern lot, all the way to the north of, I'll say where his office is, where, where, so it was actually three lots away, and they were trying to extend the drainage through the wetlands as it was designed back in the 70s, and that, and that was part of the lawsuit, I guess, in part, the cause of the lawsuit, but for some reason, they hooked somebody hooked the ZBA with this task of continuing it, and they continued it on the basis of the, of the DEC permit, so that's gone, the plan is completely different, so it doesn't affect I'll say the site plan that we have in front of the board today.
Okay, so we're not going to have a problem with the DEC regarding a permit?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, that, that was basically a, a dream to extend the drainage, and that's what the applicant was trying to do, and it just it's not going to happen.
Okay.
Good, thanks, Jane. Max, any comments yet, or you?
No, I asked Dave if he could give us an updated plan that sort of shows where the, the changes are. As he mentioned, this has gotten pretty far down the road with the planning board, last time we were looking at it, so I'll wait till I see that and provide comments at that point.
Thank you, Max.
You're welcome.
All right, at this time, I'll open the, the public hearing for Town Line, same thing, if you have a comment, raise your hand, and then state your name and address for the, the board. Alec, you see anybody?
I don't see any hands raised, Chairman.
All right.
Yeah.
Raise your hand.
Chairman?
Yeah, good, good.
Numbers.
No.
No, down lower right, there should be on the, in the chat, there's a raise your hand option. All right, seeing no, go ahead.
I just want to say, I don't see anything on my computer, raise your hand. So.
Mary, if you hover the cursor over your face. Three little
To see the three little dots, yeah.
If you click
Three little dots, okay, I just wanted to make sure people have the option.
No, I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay.
Chairman, there are two phone numbers, and I don't believe phone numbers, if they're calling in, have the ability to raise a hand if you want to ask them if they have any comments, but I think there's only two phone numbers in that regard.
All right, I see those two phone numbers, the nine, the 494-3304, and the 44, and the 403-8228.
Exactly.
All right. We could, if you want, if they have, I guess if they have they can't raise their hands, you want to, should we unmute them and see if they have a question, any?
I mean, that's how I've usually handled the meetings.
We'll, we'll unmute the two phone numbers, and we'll just ask you, if you have a comment, you could say yes or no, so then we can unmute you, so, yeah, Alex, if you can unmute those two phone numbers.
Yeah, so I'm trying to unmute them, but I think they'll still have to accept that unmuting on their end, and if they want to do that, they can do that now.
Yeah, so the two phone numbers, yeah, the 494-3304 and the 403-8228, if you want to comment, just unmute your phone and
Okay, it looks like the 403-8228 unmuted themselves, whoever that is.
I'll keep quiet anyway.
Okay, no comments.
Okay, good.
Tom and Alec, just so you know, the phone controls are star six to mute and unmute, and there's star nine to raise your hand.
Oh, perfect, thank you.
Hey, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, so
All right.
I'm just saying it's star nine if anyone on their phone wants to raise their hand, and then we can move forward, Chairman.
All right, star nine if you do, do you see anything? Not really, right? All right, at this time, I need a motion to continue the public hearing to next month.
I'll make that motion.
Carrie made the motion, I need a second.
I'll second.
Gene, second, again, most second, all in favor? Aye, I see them, opposed? All right, so we'll continue this on the 28th.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. All right, next new public hearing is the Sainsbury Seastore, this is on 210 Central Ave, it was the old Central Deli location, so at this time we'll have the applicant give us an update, so this would be
Tal. Mr. Patel, he's down on the bottom.
Yeah, Emmanuel Andrade, I'm the architect.
Oh, yeah. And the
I'm unmuting Mr. Patel, and asking him to start his video, and then Manuel, I'm going to ask you to start your video if you have it.
You have to unmute Manny?
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm good.
Okay, okay, good.
All right, is Paul with, is Paul with you, too?
He is, but he's ill.
Okay, just wanted, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
All right, give us a quick update.
Okay, so we've gone through the Architecture Review Board, got the approvals from the Architecture Review Board, we've clarified all the answers to the that the planning board has come up with, we also submitted a letter from the county planning back to the Stony Point Planning Department with our replies to see if they, what they're, if they could help us out with those, some of those comments from the county planning board.
All right, good.
Yeah.
All right, before we get to the public part of it, John, any update on this?
We had provided some minor comments, again, they've been through the process for quite a while, so this is the first public hearing opening that you're having. Again, we had some minor comments, confirmation about some fencing, but other than that, I think we're generally satisfied with the plan.
Right.
Again, we're just waiting for the, the public comments, they do have some residential neighbors, so we thought they may have some comments or questions on the overall project, but engineering wise, we're pretty well set.
All right, Max, any comments?
If you could come back to me, Tom, that would be great, I'm trying to bring up my most recent memo just to be sure.
Yeah, that's good, and I know we did our site visit, and, you know, we went through some of the things, and I know, like you said, John, with one of the, part of that fence that we talked about. All right, so what we'll do at this time, I'll open the public hearing for Sainsbury Seastore, same thing that Alex said, is you raise your hand, phones, it's star nine, and just state your name, address for the record. And just state your name, address for the record. And at this time, I'll open the public hearing.
Okay, Chairman, we do have two hands raised. I'm going to let them in in the order that I saw them. First one is
All right, go ahead. Okay, tell me when you're ready.
I think I'm on. George?
All right, George, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, since this is a new item before the board, is it possible that you can give us a little more overview of the type of project that it is for the old Deli Central on two ten?
I'm on a meeting, right?
All right, well, we'll do, yeah, right. I think right after, I think we have ma, I do have maps on the site.
That way, when people comment, they have a little better idea of what they're talking about.
No, you're right, George.
If you want, I can share my screen with that stuff if you want afterwards.
Yeah, we'll bring up the screen. We'll do that. I mean, George, we we had that up last month, I think, too, and see, but I'll make sure people see the the diagrams of it, but it's the old Central Deli and basically it's the same footprint. It's no additions. It's
Well, they're more of a general store or more of a deli?
We'll let, George, if you want, I'll let Manny just give a quick update.
Okay, thank you.
For the, for the rest of the public. So if you want, I'll put you on mute and then if you have more questions, I'll put, I'll get you back on.
All right, thank you.
All right, Manny, just give a quick update of, you know, I apologize for the public who weren't at the last few meetings, exactly what you're doing with the site.
All right, no problem. We're we're taking the existing building. We're enlarging it towards the back, keeping it the same profile. The parking area is pretty much staying the same. We're taking the the solid PVC plastic fence that's on a portion of the side and continuing that on that side along and along the other side. So basically, it's going to be a privacy fence around the perimeter. We are cutting back some of the pavement from the main road and putting some landscaping, some trees. We're also putting some parking island in between some of the parking spaces to break up the area. We're redoing all the finishes on the building and modernizing it and bringing it up to a more aesthetic pleasing area. And it's going to be more like, we keep saying it's a 7-Eleven without the 7-Eleven.
Right. And like we, I think we talked about that far. So it's not a deli. It's more of a, it's more of a like just go in, grab, more in, grab things and get out. It's not, you know, the deli style, like you said, it's just more of the get in and get out. Just refurbishing, making the look a little better, cleaning up the outside. And I know the opposite, the the one house opposite, there's going to be a little more screening towards where the fence is, where that person's back door was. I remember we talked about.
We 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 put the island there with the trees there. So this way, no one would be coming parking straight into it and shining into it. But this, again, we're still going to have the fence, the plastic fence blocking it also.
All right, good. All right, well, I'll open the, we'll open, get Alex, see who else want, if there's more public in there and
There is one more that I see right now. It's Erica. I'm going to let her in now.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, so sorry, I've joined this meeting a little late because we received the notice by mail and we were never advised that it was going to be a Zoom meeting, which I was surprised that it said to go to the road building. But in any case, I'm happy that I have this information now. This, this new project, it comes as a surprise and we're just a bit concerned with the expansion and the reconfiguration. Just exactly what other, besides you said the fencing is going to be replaced, can you give us some specifics on the height of the fence? Our driveway is right next to the the deli. I'm at one thirty one Route two ten, so.
Are you that, are you that long? Are you that long driveway to the right that goes all the way back?
Yes, that's correct.
All right.
Yes. So our concerns are more, you know, along the lines of the noise. You're going to be expanding, which means you're going to be closer to our, to our home. And there's, you know, there's some noise concerns. Are there going to be, are there going to be any additional paving done to the parking lot? And that may create some stormwater management issues if, you know, if that's the case. So I just want to know a little more as to what's going to be constructed and how the area around it that it's going to affect. I think we're the most closely affected by this whole construction. I just want a little bit of more information on that.
All right, good. What I'll do is once, once we get you not muted off, but off, I'll see if we could bring up a plan so you could at least look at it and then I'll point you to where things are. So at least he could give you an update.
Okay, because I'm looking at the plan. I pulled it up online. Yeah, I pulled it up and I see that the the proposed, the addition, it's going to close. I'm I'm no, I'm no engineer or a real estate expert here, but it's pretty close to the parking areas that are existing there and that parking area, that stockade fence back there, it's very close to our home.
We're going to change, we're going to change that stockade fence. Do you know the fence along the, as you look at the front of the property, the white fence that's along the right hand, the left hand side?
Right.
The PVC plastic fence that you really cannot see through, we're changing all that wooden stockade fence around the whole perimeter to match that. So this way, if you're standing out, you can't look through that fence to see what's in the parking lot. So we're going to block that off.
And it's going to be six feet high.
Six feet high and we are not going to increase the the paving area. Like I said, we're planning, we're we're making some planted areas within the parking and we're also pulling the area at the front entrance back. So we're actually decreasing some of the paving paved areas.
All right, so you're saying the fencing is six feet high. The current fence on there is, I'm, I think it's higher than that. It's it's the wood, it's the wooden fence. So I
If you want, you know, we can install it in front of the, next to the wooden fence. So like, you know, you will have your wooden fence also and we can put it the plastic fence. So like, you know, it will look all similar in 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 that store property.
Right, right. But it should be the same height as the fence that's currently on there. It shouldn't be shorter.
Yeah, but you can't find seven feet plastic fence, though Max Hyde is only six feet.
Are you talking about the fence in the back or on the side along your driveway?
On the side along my driveway and and the back.
Okay, and I think he said he was going
I think it should be all, it should be uniform.
Yeah, I think he said he's leaving the fence, but then he's going to put his PV sense on the end, the PV.
The left hand side white fence is already six feet, you know, that's we are going to match that fence. But if you like to keep the seven feet your wooden fence, you know, we will install it in my property, the PVC fence. So like, you know, you can, but the only reason is I think they don't make seven feet height. The wooden fans are seven feet.
Okay.
So basically, he's going to, he's going to leave, what he wants to do, I think, is leave the current fence that's there now, but then install an additional fence on his inside, which is all the white PVC. So you won't be able to look through. Go ahead, Max.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring your attention that the maximum size of a fence to be located on a property line is six feet under the code. If you want over six feet, it has to be set back from the property line. Or would have to go to the zoning board. It has to be set back two thirds its height if it's over six feet tall.
All right, but he can leave the the original fence there, correct?
That's correct. It it sounded like what he intended to do was to leave the wooden fence and install the PVC fence in front of the wooden fence.
On on the, on his side of the property, so give you
Six feet.
Okay.
And so for, yeah, and if I may ask, for the fence that's along the back of the, of the, where the deli is, that fence will, the wooden fence will remain and the PVC will go in front of that or that one was going to be removed? Because, because that fencing was, is managed by the the property owners.
I think he said he was leaving that, the back fence, the one that's in the back of the parking lot. You're going to leave that wooden fence and then put the PVC in front of it on your side.
We can do that through, we can do that throughout, on the, running to the back, along the back and the side. So this way, the fence on their side, the fence is, that's there is going to stay. From the deli side, you'll see the white PVC fence.
Right.
Okay. All right. And when is this proposed construction scheduled to begin?
As soon as, as soon as we get all the approvals.
Okay. And so my other concern was my initial question on the on the expansion. So how how close is that building going to be to, to our property? And then my concern is, or one of my concerns are the, again, if, I don't know if there's going to be any additional paving done. The stormwater management, if there's a, there's going to be, if that's going to be necessary. And then concerns would be the noise level, the hours of operation, the when this property begins, when this construction begins, with the hours of construction.
Go ahead. John, they have to follow, when they do the construction, they follow whatever the town code is, right?
Yeah, the noise ordinance. Yeah, that is, that is correct. And just to reiterate that there is no additional parking. The building is going on where there's currently pavement. So there is no additional pavement. Actually, they're reducing the pavement in the parking lot. So it actually is going to be getting better. I think their hours, I'll refer to Manny, I think they did have the hours specified on the site plan.
Yeah, I can, I have it written down over here. The store hours are going to be from five to eleven. And the lights are going to be on from five to, five PM to eleven PM and then five AM to seven AM, depending on the daylight.
They're going to be open until eleven PM?
That's what, yes.
That's pretty late for a residential area, no? Especially surrounded by houses. I mean, when Deli Central was there and the other delis that were there previously, they were done by seven PM. And that's reasonable. Eleven PM is, that means that there will be cars driving in and out of the area and the proximity of my property to the parking lot is a stone's throw away. Eleven PM is pretty late.
John, I think that's, is that what the code is? I'm just trying to figure out if that's what the the code for that that area is.
Yeah, well, I'll defer to Max, but I don't think your code has any specific limits on hours of operation. If you remember, this, this property has a variance for that use. There was no requirement in the original variance for hours that we're aware of, but I'll defer to Max if he's familiar with any regulations, but I am not concerning the hours of operation.
I am, I am not aware of any limitation on hours of operation of a deli in any district or a convenience store in any district. But I would like to
Even if it's surrounded by residential homes, even if we're right on top of it.
That is, that is, there is no law that that I know of that would limit that. There are laws regarding noise that if there was noise, there's definitely laws against light trespass.
Well, there's going to be increased traffic with that is going to come some noise. I'm not saying there's going to be, you know, motorcycle noise or something to that effect, but you could, you, from my home, you can literally just see the parking lot. You can literally see through the windows on the second level of my home from that parking lot. So it's, it's eleven PM at night and and light is on.
What we, yeah, what we could do is so that we're not like, like I said, I gave, we're giving a little leeway with the que, question answer, but what we could do is get all your your questions, give it to Manny, he'll go through it, Max and John, and then next month we'll have hopefully more precise answers so that we're not throwing things out at you with guesses.
Okay, that's fine. And I guess we can do this offline.
Yeah, we could do.
Speak to, 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 to everyone that
Yeah, we could do that. And then, Mr. Patel, you marked out where the, I remember when we were there, you marked out where the the other part of the building is going to be where we went to look, right? So I think he's got it marked out. If she could, if if, would she be able to go over and just take a look?
Exactly. Even if she wants, I can be at the side and I will explain her everything too.
All right, if that would help, Erica.
That would definitely help. Yeah, this way we can go through it and have more time. I don't want to monopolize the time here on this meeting, so I
No, you're, you're, no, you're right. It's the first time you saw it, but I think he's got things mapped out and then we'll get more answers for you for the next meet. And so we're not just like throwing things out at you.
Right. So and again, I'm not even as well prepared as I'd like to be because this just came pretty spontaneously.
No, that's okay. Well, thank you.
Could, man, just confirm, the entrance to the existing store is going to be still your main entrance, not having any entrances down closer to this home, correct?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're re-centering the entrance slightly towards the back and then the, 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 the deliveries are on that one end over there.
Okay.
All right, we'll go through that. All right. Thank you, Erica. We'll get you more.
Erica, send your questions to the planning board and I'll get them to the people that need to have them. Okay, I will do that. Thank you, Erica. Okay, and my extension's one one three, if you need me. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. All right, any other questions for, or things for the public for Salisbury? Alex, you see anymore?
I don't see any other hands raised, Chairman, but there was a group chat message that was sent by Jackie to everyone. Which just for the record, prior use for many years, usual and customary would be being a good neighbor to not be lights, cameras in action until eleven PM. That's the end of the message.
All right. We'll put that down.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Jane.
This is, this is not the first time this is before us. My understanding is when we have an application that comes in, aren't all the neighbors notified of the action being taken, no matter what it is?
I think, go ahead. Is it when they, when we do a public hearing is when it comes in, John?
Get back a second. If an application is doing something, an applicant is doing something, my understanding was the surrounding neighbors were notified. When is that done? I mean, a public hearing to me seems to be a little on the late side. I mean,
That's when it's, that's when it's done, Jean. When there's a public hearing scheduled, the applicant is required to mail out letters saying that we're going to have a public hearing. That's the first time that the public would
That I understand, I, that I understand. But when applicant comes in to do XYZ, that point shouldn't then, and my, was my impression that the surrounding property owners would be notified that some sort of action be taken. So if this woman or some other other person who lives in the neighborhood can come into a Zoom or come to a town planning board meeting and find out what's going on, not to be hit cold at a public hearing. Maybe I'm wrong, but that's the impression I've always had.
Yeah, no, I'll defer to Max, but this is typically because when it first comes in front of the board, it's really not ready for the public because you don't know it's going to be denied or kicked off or they're going to change it. So the public hearing again, is when the board is generally satisfied and it meets the code, then you have the public hearing and get their comments. It's, they're not hit cold. This is the first time they're hitting. That's why you leave the public hearing open to address their comments. But I'm not aware of any municipality that as soon as they make an application that they submitted to, to the neighbors.
Maybe not as soon as they make an app, I don't know. It just seems to me that this individual lady should have been, had some knowledge that something was going on next door. I mean, example, I mean, where I live with Eagle Bay, I mean, I, I've been, I guess, I guess I was notified. I don't know. I mean,
No.
No.
No. So in other ways, this lady's completely right by saying she walks in here at the opening of a public hearing and got all these questions.
Yeah, and that's what it's designed for. And then you answer those questions and you continue the public hearings to address her comments.
Okay.
Jean, we've, we've been doing it this way for as long as I've been involved in Stony Point, going back to, you know, two thousand and six or so. The difference, the change was, I I think in the past, we would open the public hearing a bit quicker than more recently. and leave it open over a longer period of time.
Right.
There's definitely pros and cons to that approach. The pros are that you get the public involved earlier. The cons is that sometimes it's difficult for the public to maintain interest over a longer period of time, and by the time something's ready for approval, the, the, the public is not showing up anymore.
Yeah, but maybe I'm, I'm losing something along the road here. I understand what you're saying to me. I'm saying to you, in my opinion, if an applicant comes in to do whatever he wants to do, at that point, if it gets beyond the informal, and, and, and the process starts, the first meeting, you know, a new application, we're going to review it. I just feel personally that, that surrounding neighbors, not the whole town, but the surrounding neighbors which are directly affected by it should at least be notified, hey, guess what they're going to do next to your next door, your next door neighbor's house. I mean, that's just my opinion.
But that's the opening of the public hearing.
Yeah.
You, you, you could notify them, but if you don't open the public hearing, there's no forum for them to submit comments.
That's okay, but I'm not saying that. But if we notify them, and it's up to them if they have an interest in what's going on, they can listen to, they can listen to a planning board meeting. This is not the first thing, this, this Stanbury Seastore is on the agenda. It's been on for months. Had this woman, in particular, this woman been notified that we're, we're doing something there.
Has it been on a regular planning board agenda?
It has, but if she doesn't, here's a, I don't want to beat this to death and keep you all night. Here's a woman that doesn't even know what's going on. All of a sudden, she somehow finds out there's a public hearing, we got this, we got it installed. All I'm saying is, in the beginning of an app, an application, if we're going to move forward, I was my impression, surrounding neighborhood, neighbors would be notified, at least that something's going on, up to their discretion to either get involved, pay attention, or walk away or do something.
That, that, I, I have to agree with John. We can, we can discuss it, Gene, but I don't know of any community in New York State that has a public notification that an application has been received or something of that effect. Usually, when the planning board finds that a completion, the application is complete, meaning it, it addresses all the issues it needs to, then the public hearing is, is scheduled.
You'd, you'd have to change the town code.
I'm not understanding you, or you're not understanding me, but I'm not going to belay this.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just think those people surrounding that, that store should have been notified. Now, and I might pick on this one in, in, instance. It could have been, you know.
Well, I was going to say, as, as Max says, you, you haven't never done that for any other project, but if you want.
You just, yeah, we could, we could discuss that going forward, Gene, because I don't think, like John said, it's not part of our code.
Not a bad idea, but.
Yeah.
Done right here.
Yep. All right. Alex, you see any more comments right now?
I do not have any other hands raised. I'm just scrolling through. No, no other hands raised, Chairman. There's a couple other group chat messages that came in.
Yeah, and like Gene said, like, and just for the public to know is that, you know, in, with the, with everything going on is, we try to put as much, I know you, you know, it's up to the public, you have to go to the website, and on the town's websites where we're putting things, and right now, that's the only way we can get messages across because we can't go to town hall, we can't have meetings there. So everything we're trying to do is put on the website, meaning when there are Zooms. I know Tuesday there was a town board meeting, and I even didn't know about the Zoom until like 6:30. So we're going to try to update as much as possible on the website, but what I'll do is make a motion to continue the public hearing to next month.
I'll make that motion.
I got a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Patel, then we'll see you next month for the, we'll continue the public hearing.
Those comments, will, will, we sent those comments that we, did you get from the, the public?
Yeah, Mary will get them, and then we'll get them from the, Jennifer, she's, or if we got them in there, we'll, we'll send them over.
And how does the, have you guys had a chance to take a look at the letter that I sent about the county planning questions, or?
I think John is going through those and Max, correct?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, have a great week.
You, too.
Have a good holiday.
All right.
You, too.
Next is a new application. This is Phillips and Armstrong. It's a, a lot line change located on the west side of Flores Crom Court. It's a new application. Who's Dave? Is that you?
Yes.
Go ahead, Dave, give us an update.
Basically, this is a, a property line between two people that they would like to change the property line and keep basically the same areas, but it would adjust to the physical lot itself. And what happened was, back in the 80s, or the late 80s, when these subdivisions were done, the town had made a code up that the lot width could not be reduced only in the cul-de-sac. So you ended up with these lots where the property line was on a weird shape. And if you look at Tax Lot 48, the one on the top, you'll see that the, the old property line ends up opposite the front door, which is a little weird. So usually, like we just did with Lightfoot and a couple other ones, you fast track it. You fast track it by coming into the board, and the board sees that both people on either side, both sides of the lot, that line that they agree, and it's a common thing, and it's no impact to nothing, and it's a done deal. But in this case, Steve Honin read the regulations, and a few other people like me missed that part, that it doesn't work like this with this, with this one, because we need to ask the board to waiver the lot width. And, and it's in the code, and that's what happens on these sharp curves. So you, instead of getting a weird angle property line, you get a radial line, one that's with the radius, and it's, it's more appropriate. You can't do that override unless it's a subdivision. So what we're asking the board to do is, we're going to change this to the legal term of a subdivision, and ask the board to set a public hearing, then we'll notify the neighbors, but it's still the same map. It's just that to get the board to use that Regulation 16B, we have to have a subdivision in front of it. So in this case, the oddity is, we have to go back and use the old regulations, which they use on the cul-de-sac back then, but after they were updated, now we can use it on these lots. So it asks the board if it would respectfully set a public hearing for this, and we would change the application to a subdivision, and then it has to be circulated. So it's kind of like a really small subdivision, but it has to follow those regulations.
Right. John.
Yeah, no, I would, I would agree. Basically, we're moving an invisible line. Nothing's going to change on the lots, nothing, nothing's going to change on the road. And it's, you know, the layout they have, again, when you walk out a front door, you expect that to be your property. And in this instance, a portion of it isn't. So we have no objection. Again, Steve did find out by going, checking the regulations that unfortunately, or fortunately, you actually have to have a subdivision application for this, not just a lot line change. So I have no objection. I, I'd recommend that you schedule a public hearing for next month. In the meantime, Dave can update the application, but the plan will not change at all.
That'll work. Hey, Max. Max.
Yes.
Um, are we doing this as a type two, or are we changing it?
No, it's going to be changed, but before you can really take any action.
Yeah.
Dave, did you submit an EAF Part One for this?
Probably a, yeah, short form.
A short form? So, yeah, so, you know, this is a, an action that only is before the planning board. You could declare lead agency and classify the action as unlisted.
All right. So I'll make the motion that we declare lead agency. I just need a second.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, got a, motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, we'll be lead agency, and then I just need a motion to make this an unlisted action.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I need a second.
I reckon it.
I see a second mark. I see Eric and Mike at second. So I got a motion, a second is unlisted action. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. Max, any more comments, or we get to wait for him to update his documents?
No, no, this is a very straightforward. This is, you know, still just the moving a line. We, we can call it a subdivision, but it really still is a lot line change just for that, that peculiarity of law. So I don't have any comments on, on the application substantively. Procedurally, you have to go to the, the public hearing, and we'll have a Part Two, Part Three, and neg deck prepared for next month.
And you have to set the public hearing?
Yes.
All right.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing.
All right, we got a motion to set the public hearing for next month, the 28th. I need a second.
I'll second it.
All right, got a motion second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, so we'll set the public hearing for next month, Dave.
Thank you very much.
Get the documents updated. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, next item, it's just a, once again, Eagle Bay, this is site plan review. Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, basically, this is going to be Amy because they're talking about the findings, where, you know, we had that glitch with the PIP.
Yep.
Amy?
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Nice to see you. So as you will recall, you accepted the FEIS back in September of this year, the final environmental impact statement. That was redistributed to the agencies, and then after the town received a letter from the PIPC saying, why didn't you address our comments? We submitted a letter back in February, which was during the time period for public comment. Basically, we all looked through our records, and, you know, somehow it, it fell through the cracks, perhaps the beginning of COVID or whatnot. But, you know, there were thousands of pieces of paper here, and, you know, so something fell through. So I spoke to Steve Honin and Max, and we decided collectively how best to deal with it, and we all concluded that an addendum to the FEIS would be the most appropriate way to address the PIPC's comments. We've prepared that addendum. It is before you tonight, as well as an amended notice of completion. So what we're asking is that you adopt the addendum, which addresses each one of their comments in turn, file the amended notice of completion. We'll have the 10-day cooling off period, and then we'll be able to adopt findings in January, and the findings will actually address the fact that we did this, and that we, you know, that all comments were appropriately addressed. We could go through each of the comments if you like. They have gone back and forth between the attorneys, planners, et cetera, and I think everybody was satisfied that we addressed all of them. I point out also that a lot of them had to do with, you know, visual impacts and things like that, and a lot of those were addressed in the DEIS. If you remember, we did visual simulations back when, on the prior iteration of this project. So we had all that documentation to show, and some other concerns were, you know, minor, or I'd call them more like site plan type of issues, but I'll, I'll leave it to the chairman or Max or whomever as to how you want me to perceive from here.
You're muted, Tom.
You're Mr. Chairman.
I know you went through the amendment, right? You want to go through it? Oh, what happened? I got muted again.
No, you're, you're on. Beginning of your, your statement.
Oh, I know you had, you had gone through, and did you prepare something with the, you, you wanted to go over?
I, I did prepare an addendum. We had, the, the applicant had prepared a proposed letter of response to the PIPC that had been circulated a couple of weeks ago. We really took a lot of those responses. We suggested some edits in, in various points, and, and also put it in the framework of what we believe would qualify as an FEIS addendum. There's certain requirements for what needs to be on the cover of an FEIS, and it has to list who, who contributed to the preparation of the FEIS. And, and so this is really an addendum. This is a, a document that's intended to be attached to what you've circulated previously. As Amy said, there's, there's really a couple of points in here. I'd be happy to go over them, point by point, if, if you'd like. It is somewhat repetitive to the information that's already in the FEIS document, however, because as Amy said, there, you know, we received comments on, on the, on the renderings from other commentators. A lot of these are, are repeated.
If you want to give like a brief overview or some, just like a.
Yeah, sure. So the first comment of the PIPC letter was with regard to the, a statement in the DEIS, because again, this letter was reviewing the DEIS, so it's back, back in February, they, they provided this. And that statement had mentioned that there was a letter from SHIPO of no adverse effect. And PIPC.
Tom, wait, excuse me a second. I don't want to, I'm sorry for interrupting. What are we, what are we really looking at now? Let me just say this. I mean, at 3:04 this afternoon, I just got an email. The notice of completion, the final environmental impact statement, addendum, FEIS addendum. Then I got 28 pages of a final environmental impact statement. See, oh, I don't know about you guys, but I just got this. I, did I read it? Absolutely not. I mean, you can go over what you want. I'm confused where I am right now. And may, again, maybe I'm having a bad night here, but I mean, one is 28 pages, one is five, and you're going to stay, stay there, you're going to answer a couple of questions. I think we need more time to at least digest this to find out what's in this. Again, maybe it's me. I don't know. There's a lot.
So, so the content, the substance of this document, you received back in the beginning of November in the form of a letter of response from the applicant to the PIPC.
Correct.
What we did is we added some attachments that were the original letter from PIPC. We added the two no effect letters that, from SHIPO, that were referenced in the response letter, and we added a bunch of affidavits of mailing that were discussed in the original response letter, where it shows that the DEIS was sent to SHIPO at the Palisades region. So that's, those attachments are probably of, of that 25-page document you mentioned are probably about 15. Maybe more. So really, the substance of, of this information you've had together in your possession since the beginning of November. I think she sent that on November 16th. I don't, I don't know. Was that distributed? Yeah, yeah, it was. Okay. So Mary, yeah, Mary did provide that to the board. It, it looks a little different, Gene, because I kind of repackaged it, and, and I had to prepare the notice of completion that essentially, you know, makes it an official secret document that you're accepting tonight.
Okay. Not me. I'm not accepting this tonight.
Well, I, right, that proposed to be accepted tonight, correct.
I mean, you know, this, this place, this has been going on for years. And I get really upset when I get something at 3:00 in the afternoon, the day of a meeting of 28 pages and five pages, and then you want, someone wants to come in and say, let's adopt this. I mean, I understand, Max, with all due respect to you and John, we, we, as, in my opinion, as planning board members, rely on you to do what, what you have to do. rely on you to do what you have to do. When the bottom line comes down and we have to vote on this controversial situation, to give me something at 3 o'clock in the afternoon to work, to make a vote on 33 pages or whatever, could have been repetitive, but I didn't have a chance to make this, no, honestly. I mean, I just, you know,
I just want to point out that the salient information, the actual responses that are that we're proposing be adopted were distributed over a month ago. And that's the need of the document. As Max said, we had to put, you know, the notice of completion covers on there and we had to put the the proper headings on there and we attached the exhibits that were referenced in the letter. But this aspect, I think, of the of the application is really just to address a single letter that was missed. And again, you know, hundreds of submissions. And I don't think this in and of itself is particularly controversial, but of course, you know, I've got my own view of that. And, but I, we still were hoping for a vote on this tonight. We did discuss it, I believe, at a prior meeting and we did discuss it at a workshop that we're going to be seeking us.
Let me just say this. This was what I just, the statement I just made before is my own, that's my personal opinion. What the rest of the board does is their business. I personally do not like it some at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, the day of the meeting, had given us four or five hours to digest or even look through 28 pages. And they're intense about comments, questions and comments. I just, I think it's just not fair to us as a planning board member to give us such short notice and ask them for a Now, what the rest of the board does is their business. So you know where I'm coming from. I'm not against it. Don't get me wrong. I'm against the fact that you just, I just got it down the road. It's, to me, it's not right. Again, I said my piece. Let the board do what they want to do.
All right. Thanks, Gene. So Max, basically, basically, let me ask you a question. Basically, what's the amendment doing? Is it saying stuff that we needed to add in the last document that didn't get added or clarified? Is that what we're trying to do here?
So, so what happened is, to go back to the DG I'm sorry?
February was the letter.
Okay.
That fell through the crack.
Right. The DGIS was subject to a public hearing and was subject to public comment.
Right.
We received, as Amy said, we received thousands of pages of comments, transcript. All had to be addressed by the applicant in the FGIS. And they are. There are hundreds of responses to comments in the FGIS. This letter was misplaced from the PIPC.
Right.
We discovered it back in October. The applicant proposed a response letter to PIPC, which was circulated to the board in November. In speaking with Amy and Steve and figuring out how this works in the seeker process, this letter and the lead agency's responses have to be made part of the official FEIS. So we need to add an addendum. This is basically a document that says these responses to comments are hereby added to the FEIS that you already declared complete back in, I think it was October, it might have been September. So again, this is largely the same responses that Amy had suggested back in November. There are some changes that I made to add, you know, some additional information that I felt was relevant. For example, what is the context of the views from the battlefield today versus what is it proposed to be? And other matters like that. So I understand Gene's point. You know, I would have liked to have gotten this to the board a little bit earlier. I want to make sure that the board understands that Amy was, and the applicant has been very cooperative. I had a couple of other items, including for the town that I was working on, where I couldn't focus as much attention on this as I would have liked to and get it to you a little earlier. So that being said, I'd be happy to go through the comments and responses as you had suggested, if you'd like, Tom.
Yeah, if you just, if you want to go through and then I'll have the board, if they have comments, we'll take them up.
Okay, so the first, the first comment has to do with a statement in the DEIS that said a letter had been received from the state historic preservation office that there would be no adverse impact. The response here is more of a clarification that that SHIPO letter of no response was with relation to the in-water infrastructure, the bulkhead and the marina changes. And that a second letter of no effect had been received for the Breakers project, which was an earlier iteration of this project. It was actually a more intensive, higher density project than is currently proposed. We also added a response that the project sponsor will be submitting this project through the CRIS submission system. And that a letter of no effect will be required prior to issuance of state and/or federal permits. And then I added to the applicant suggested response and prior to final site plan approval. So that is the comment and response of the first. The second had to do with PIPC commenting on the visual simulations in the DEIS. They suggested that the proposed structures were not in character with surrounding development and suggested that could create a significant visual impact. They asked a second question about whether or not there are requirements to deduct the area used for commercial area from the residential density. And lastly, they suggested that a 170-unit alternative should have been evaluated. So again, we went through, we responded. These are mostly parallel to the way the applicant proposed a response back in November, which is to show what was contained in the the DEIS document, which were renderings. Talking about how, when we adopted the zoning, we noted that the PW district sort of always has contrasted with the residential districts surrounding it. Whether it be the working boatyards in this location or whether it's the Pankow Oil Terminal on the other side of the bay. It's always been sort of in contrast with the surrounding land better. We also noted that the maximum building heights of the previous project of 45 feet were indicated by doing a wasn't a balloon test, it was a crane test where the applicant had put up cranes and pennants to display the height of the buildings and then used those demonstrations to establish the visual renderings in the DEIS. They talk about the line of sight diagrams in the document. And they talk about the character of the of the area changing from what was a working boatyard with boat holes, the aged steel hangar buildings and heavy equipment such as the boat lifts to what is going to be a well landscaped site containing parking and four-story residential buildings and subject to architectural review. The distance between the battlefield and the site is noted. And the existing views as opposed to the proposed views are noted. Particularly, the proposed views will be of the boat slip, the new fishing pier, the landscape, public esplanade and buildings of the proposed development. But there will still be in context surrounding the proposed development additional marinas along the bay, the town park, the Pankow Oil. And in the mid-ground, you're also going to still see the US Gypsum Plant across the water, which sort of rises above the trees with the conveyor there. And in context, it seems like the proposed changes are not really going to impact the battlefields. We, the applicant has mentioned about the materials going to be used for the building. It talks about the maintenance of the wetlands between the battlefield and the site. It talks about the onsite lighting that was proposed. Again, these are all items that were submitted as part of the letter in November. It also talks with regard to code requirements for commercial development and meeting those requirements. This is in specific response to the comment on whether or not commercial areas should be deducted. That clarifies that the code doesn't require such a deduction. And then lastly, it talks about the alternatives that were required in the scope. Although it's not stated in the response, the reality is the the department, PIPC, had an opportunity to comment on the scopes and that would have been the appropriate time to suggest additional alternatives. So that was the longest response because that was the most substantive comment that was received. The third has to do with the the distance from the state historic site to the park. There was a statement, I believe, in the DEIS that the buildings would almost sort of appear architecturally as boats, you know, sort of long square barges boats. I don't know that that was something that the planning board really reiterated in the FEIS in any, in any sort of strenuous way. It's probably more of an architectural statement in the DEIS, which, as you remember, the DEIS being the applicant's document and the FEIS being the board's document. The PIPC also talks about grading and landscape screening and asking for additional. They asked for additional photo simulations and alternative designs to be provided. So in the response there, we you know, refer back to that earlier response as far as the visibility of the site and the character of the site that is existing versus proposed. We talk about what the applicant is proposing with regard to restoration of the wetlands, the existing wetlands that have been degraded. And we talk about the visual simulations having been something that was set forth in the scope that had been subject to public and agency comment. And actually, there were alternatives added at that point. And visual simulations. So that is all referenced here in the response. Comment four by the PIPC was somewhat of a mysterious statement that they didn't seem to want the placing of plaques on the esplanade that provided the history of the battlefield. And that's really, the response here was that the board is really not sure why they would object to such plaques, that this is something that the town has asked for. But that the PIPC is welcome to suggest alternatives that would still provide the value that the town is seeking in these interpretive plaques. The fifth comment by PIPC had to do with not having evaluated the trail connection that probably you'll remember I've been pushing most probably for between the esplanade and the battlefield to provide a future connection. The response that's proposed is that this is something, this connection is not something that's proposed at this time. That really all that is happening is easements are being provided for a future connection. And that really the PIPC is going to be involved in any connection in the future that might occur. They would have to be. If we're going to run a path onto the battlefield, they would be an involved agency. Lastly, the PIPC, the last comment had to do with pictures of the harbors at Haverstraw and asking sort of whether or not this is the type of development that is proposed for this site. And although not explicitly stated, seemingly to object with the idea that this might be something that's proposed for the site. In the response that's proposed here really goes over the differences in scale between the harbors in Haverstraw and the Eagle Bay project. The harbor site is 537 residences on 20 dry acres compared to Eagle Bay, which is 264 units on 17 dry acres. So you're talking about roughly 57% of the density. The harbor's buildings, the the clubhouse building is as high as 60 feet. And that's measured to the midpoint of the peaked roof. So it's actually a bit higher to the ridge. Probably around 65 feet. And the largest building there, Riverside, contains 110 units. By comparison, the Eagle Bay proposal is as tall as 45 feet to a flat roof. So it's significantly shorter by about 70% of what harbors is. And containing 76 units in the largest building, which again is about 70% of the largest in harbors. Lastly, it refers back to several comments in the FEIS that were also received, asking or making comparisons between this project and the harbors of Haverstraw. And then beyond that, really, the substance of this addendum has to do with the process as we spoke previously. Which is that, again, this was comments that had been misplaced and this document is intended to remedy that.
All right, Max. Max, just, I'm going to go, I'm going to ask the board members. I know Gene has his had some comments. I'm going to go around to the board. Jerry, what are your, what are your comments?
Well, when I first read this from the PIPC, I felt they went very far afield in their questioning of the project. And some of the commentary seemed surprising to me. But I do believe they've been answered, you know, satisfactorily by the applicant. And I don't really see, as I said, why they were asking some of the questions they, they were. And, you know, again, I just, I feel personally that they've been answered to a degree that should be satisfactory.
All right.
That's it.
All right, Mark, do you have any comments?
No, I don't really have any comments on it, no. I mean, I read it over this afternoon and nothing really popped out at me.
All right. Eric, Mike, I see you guys. Anything?
I honestly, Tom, haven't even opened the email yet because I didn't get done with work until 6 o'clock and didn't find out about the email until 10 minutes before the meeting.
Right. All right. Carrie, what's what's, what are your comments?
I mean, to Gene's point, I agree, it would have been nice to get this, you know, a little bit more time in advance. But that being said, you know, I agree, you know, sort of the substance of of the addendum is contained within the first six or seven pages. And I did have a chance to look at it before the meeting.
All right. And I think, I think like Max had said, this wasn't, I think, this was something that just got lost during COVID. It was, and it's just, I guess, some addition, it's just some comments from the PIP and it's basically, I think, a lot of things that we've already covered, right, Max? That they're just like rephrasing. And you're on, I said, okay. And let me ask you a question. Wasn't it the PIP that didn't want the connection to the battlefield? Or was it the battlefield?
To my understanding, it was the battlefield. I am, I am not sure. There there seems to be some impetus beyond the commenter who provided. So I I would, I would not sort of get into trying to characterize that. I would say we received these comments from the State Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation. Actually, I'm sorry, this is the PIPC, not the State Office.
Right, this is the PIPC.
The PIPC. So we received these comments from the PIPC on the app, on the document, and and these are the substantive responses. And I would say that, you know, with probably about 75% of the response is something that had already been contained in the FEIS.
All right. And then so basically, the the FEIS that that we have. Most of them, I think, like you said, 75% is answered. There are some other, this was just part of the PIPC's comments that for some reason got missed during COVID. No one's fault when the applicant wasn't anywhere, it was just got lost. And adding this tonight, now, we, if we add this tonight, excepted now, if we find something else, we cannot, can we always go in and add it again?
If if you were, and I hope we don't find something else.
No, I I
Find something else, yes. If it's mine, right?
If it was received during, this is being addressed because it was received during.
This is stuff that that, like, we're, a lot of the stuff that we're answered were letters or comments received that we've put in there. And this was the only letter that never got in. But all the others, comments from the public, the all the different agencies got in. This was probably the one that got that slipped that didn't get in. And most of it is covered.
Yeah, and the responses, Tom, are are fairly straightforward. There wasn't anything raised in here that talked about an impact that hadn't been previously identified and considered by the board.
Right.
The board always knew what this thing was going to look like from the battlefield. That information was in the FEIS. If this had something more important in it, then we would be recommending a different process.
Right. And I, and I I kind of understand where Gene, where Gene's going, that we do get like, a lot of the stuff lasts, like, towards the end, but it's stuff that you or Steve are working on and and John and most of the stuff, you know, you're the ones that are going through this and examining it. And if you find something, you usually let us know. And like you said, if 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 it was in more detail, you probably would have said, you know, we need more time on that.
That, that's correct. I mean, I, I, I didn't think there was anything of significance here. And hopefully you've had time to review the PIPC comments since since those have been in your possession for a little bit longer. But I don't know if the board had had felt that there was anything that required a significant relook at the project or the environmental documents based on the comments you received from the PIPC.
Right. All right. When Gene wanted something, yeah, Gene.
I made some notes on the original letter from the PIPC. And again, I'm not against what's going on here. I'm I'm upset over, not upset, I'm was getting it so late. I mean, I've, I've got stuff marked off here. I'm not going to go through it tonight because you just went through what Max said, and that's okay. That's all fine. But I had certain questions I wanted to ask. You know, questions I had or concerns I had. But, you know, at this point, you just do what you guys got to do. Again, I'm not against what they're doing. I'm just getting the lack of time to respond in my own way to what's going on. That's again.
Let me, let me, Max, let me ask you a question. Like Gene said, if if, you know, we add this in, but I think, Gene, you have more questions on other, other things. Are there, are there things in the FEIS or just things in general with the application we go?
We're talking basically about the PIPC here.
Right.
Now, I've got the original. I've got things marked in yellow that I I had concerns about. I got it at three o'clock. I just didn't have time to compare apples to apples. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying what their answers are bad. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying.
You didn't have time to compare.
As a, as a planning board person, you're
Right.
Digest, that's all.
All right, Eric, I think you, you had a question, right?
Yeah, I do. Don't, do you think that the question that you had about us going back, if we do vote on it, should be tabled by the attorney to ask if it's legal for us to go back and change things after we vote? Or, you know, shouldn't the attorney be answering that?
I can't answer that, but I pretty much summarized it appropriately. If it was something more significant, it would be a different process. But since these comments weren't as characterized as being that significant, it was something that could be addressed as an addendum. And also to Amy's point, since these comments were received during the comment period, they're appropriately addressed now. If they're received after that comment period is closed, then there, there wouldn't be a need necessarily to address those comments. But these were received before. And unfortunately, during the COVID pandemic, they got lost in the shuffles, you know.
So if we vote on it today, we can't change anything in the future, correct?
With respect to these, no.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just to throw my two cents in because this is more FEIS, but I compared what they, what the questions were, what the answers were, doesn't, from a practical engineering point, doesn't affect the project at all. Right? There are no building changes, no parking changes, no utility changes. These are basically, from my point of view, semantics that have been answered, but just need to be re-answered in a different way. So, but no changes to the site plan. There's no impact to the, I'll call it boots on the ground from any of these comments from the engineering.
And that's why we decided to do it as an addendum and not, you know, as a supplemental or anything like that. And you know, obviously, we were shocked to see that there was a, you know, a comment that we didn't address. We jumped on it right away. We went back and forth with your staff on it, distributed it, you know, about, about a month ago. And I think that Max, in this public forum tonight, was able to address each and every one of the PIPC's comments, and you were all here and present for that. So again, it's just in our best interest and quite frankly, the town's best interest to have a complete FEIS. So that's why we're asking that you adopt the addendum, let us file a revised notice of completion, and then we can move on to findings. And this, the fact that this process occurred will also be addressed in the findings, correct, Max?
Yes, this, this needs to be addressed in the findings, which is really where the planning board makes its decisions with regard to the application. So I I think that's really the the important point is this is not a decision, this is a response to comments.
All right, so um we we have, I guess, I guess we have the amendment. Go ahead.
Is there a possibility for the postpone the vote? So we all have more adequate time to go over till next month, till next meeting? I'm just throwing it out there.
The, the complication there is that you have to provide 10 days between when you adopt findings and when you adopt, file the FEIS. So there has to be a 10 day delay. The other issue at at the heart of this matter is that you are supposed to render a final decision on the application that involves an applicant within 30 days of filing your FEIS. So we're in a position here where the applicant has extended the time to render your findings, your, your, and I'm sorry, your, your findings and your final decision in order to deal with this issue.
Right.
So you would be asking them to extend that even further. When this defect or we'll call it this misplacement wasn't really the applicant's issue.
Right. And Max, we still, I mean, after we get through this, we still have a site plan review, correct?
Well, yeah, I mean, the findings is is going to be the the big important that's where you establish what are the impacts that this project might have? What are the mitigations that are going to be required? That's an, I don't, I don't want to suggest that that's not an important step of this process because I think that is really the most important step upcoming. Then, yes, you are going to have to do a site plan review after you adopt your findings. And that is going to deal with several important issues that don't have to do with environmental impacts. Such as the design of the site. So, yes, there's, there's a lot more work to do following this, this phase.
All right.
So if if you, if you were not to vote tonight, I would suggest perhaps that you consider, and again, I apologize, I I feel at least partially to blame here. Just couldn't get it done. You know, I wish I could have got it done, you know, last Friday, for example. And, you know, I would suggest if you would be willing to schedule a special meeting in advance of your regular January meeting by at least 10 days. So that you could still look to render findings in January and not ask for an additional extension by the applicant.
If we did, so if we if we moved it to, if we did, we, what would we have to do? 10 days before the next planning board meeting?
At least 10 days. I I would, I would suggest maybe, and again, assuming we're still going to be doing Zoom calls, that you do it the evening of the the tech meeting.
And and we'll just discuss this one point. It's not going to be a special meeting for everything else that they want to bring up. It's just this one addendum voting.
Right. All right, I think.
That would be the 14th, and and that would, that would allow us to not request an additional extension of time from the applicant.
All right. Gene, would you be all right with that?
Yes, I just enough time to review it.
No, I, Jane, I I I just want to make sure that we're, that we're all on the same page with this. And like Mike and Eric said, you know, I thank you, Eric, for that. But you're right is, and Mike. No, I meant Mike, not Eric. I'm looking at both of you. Sorry. I saw, I saw gray. I'm sorry. No, but no, you're exactly right. And I know, like you said, we want to make sure something got, you know, like you said, something got dropped in February. We just want to make sure, like Gene said, he wants to go through it. So you know, if the board is okay, we could do, you know, the 14th and just to go over this one item.
Let me just say one thing. I didn't want to throw a hatchet in by a brick into the fire here. But I did have some questions. I'll be honest with you. I didn't have enough time to look at the PIP, PIPC letter and the response. Not that they're wrong. I, it was only four hours between 3:04 and 7 o'clock. You know, I'm eating dinner. I'm not worried. This ain't my life, you know?
No. So, so Gene, so basically, the, during the the tech meeting on the 14th, your questions could get answered. Or if you have
Is this going to be a tech meeting or a special meeting by the whole board?
I would suggest it be a public meeting of the board in the evening.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, but the tech meeting is that day, Gene. So if you had questions before the public meeting, you could ask the tech meeting and get your answers.
So the tech means the 14th, and then at night, we're going to have a Zoom meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, if you're going to take any action like adopting the addendum, you would have to have a full public meeting.
Right.
Have to do notice and all of that.
Again, I may go through this and say, hey, they answered my questions.
All right, I need to, what does the other board, the the rest of the board think? Chair?
Well, I feel like they're all throwing me under the bus here.
Nah, not throwing you under the bus. I I'm just feeling that these questions were brought up in in November. They were discussed, they were responded to. I I find, again, the questioning by the PIPC unbelievably far afield on some of the questions, but you know, I I I would vote in favor of doing it tonight, but.
Well, if I remember, I think Gene had to step out early from that we discussed this on, and that's why he's a little behind on it, I think.
All right. Carrie, what are your thoughts?
Why don't I, why don't we all poll the board? And, you know, let somebody, let, you know, Gene doesn't want to, we could all, whoever wants to can abstain.
Yeah. All right. We'll just, we'll just poll the board right now. I'll go with me. I mean, you know, I would, I would go with the amendment. I would say yes. But Jerry, you would go with it?
Yes, I would.
Mark?
Yeah, I'll go with it. I was, I was there for most of the discussion. And like I said, I read it over today and nothing jumped out.
All right. Eric, Mike.
I wasn't at the tech meeting and I didn't have time to read the email. And I think I would be doing a disservice to the town if I voted tonight.
All right, Mike abstained. All right, Carrie, what do you?
Me personally, I I would be okay with voting tonight.
So if I do one, two. Gene, you would want to wait, right?
Yes.
That's the one, two, three, four. All right, so if we voted tonight, we would, we would have four, two, two, one is stained. Thinking here.
Does the applicant have any, have any problem with a special meeting in January if it keeps them on schedule?
I knew I was going to get asked that. Yeah, I mean, you know, theoretically, I I don't. I mean, obviously, I'd like to have the whole board comfortable with this. Although, you know, I mean, I I take, you know, I take a majority vote, but, you know, my, and just from our perspectives, so you understand, and I don't mean to be petty, but that's kind of part of my job, which is that we thought we had approval of the FEIS back in September. We had a discussion about extending it to December. Here we are tonight in December. And I have to thank Max, actually. I know how busy he was, and he was still able to work with me and and get this all out to you. And I am sorry that, you know, it, you have a little bit more time to review the full and final document, but really, the meat and substance of it was in something that was already distributed. But the earliest that you could adopt findings at this point would be at your regularly scheduled January meeting. So if the inclination is that you know, people can get themselves comfortable, have a special meeting that night, and we'll adopt findings at the same meeting that we were expecting to adopt findings. that we were expecting to adopt findings.
You'd be okay.
I think I'd be all right with that. Anything that you want to add?
Dave's just looking, I think, Dave's, Dave's stunned.
No, I didn't, I didn't hear the question.
Oh, I just asked if you had anything that you wanted to add.
No, I, I'm fine with waiting to January 14th, so they're all comfortable. You know, we, we've
Been waiting this long.
As lenient, yes. Well, let's get it right.
All right, and like, I, I, okay, what we'll do is, we'll go to the 14th, we'll do a special that night, so that it, all the board is comfortable. Because, you know, I've got, we've got seven members, you know, Eric, Mike, all of you, Jerry, Mark, you know, everyone's got to be comfortable with this. So if we can push it off to the, what happened? Did I lose? Oh, there. So if we, we can push it off to the 14th, we're fine. We'll, we'll do that, if that's okay.
Listen, being I stirred the pot, is, is the tech meeting on the 14th also?
Yeah.
I'm good after Zoom.
Yeah.
All right, so listen, I'll be there on the 14th. I mean, and I'm not saying I'm going to oppose anything. I just wanted some time to digest.
No, we agree.
All right, I would just add that we, we, we probably need to also start opening discussion on the draft findings. So I think this was, this was the document that the draft findings was sort of waiting for. We, I think John's office and my office really worked with Amy and, and Dave's office to get to findings, sort of that, that we think works for the town. And except for this item, which came up, just as we were sort of reviewing the findings. So I, I think we can quickly get that into the planning board's hands as well. And that's the more important document to review.
All right, thanks. So I need a motion just to get, so we do that special meeting, the 14th, just to go over that amendment item. I'll do the motion, I need a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. So we'll do this, we'll do the same thing, 7 o'clock, we'll do a Zoom. The tech meeting will be during the day, and then at 7, we'll just do this one amendment discussion to go over. All right, thank you, Amy.
Okay, thank you.
And Dave, there's nothing else you want to talk about, right?
No, I just update, update you, you know, like I said last month, we're redoing the plans into these five different sections. And we're just having a little problem with the off-site work because we had to get the utilities be marked, and it's just taking time. So we'll be finished with the plans before the next meeting, hopefully in the beginning of January, and you can have your sets for review and, and the discussion. And then after you get done with the findings, we'll move on from there.
All right, thank you, Dave. Thank you, Amy, I appreciate it.
Please take care, thank you.
All right, so we'll go, the, the next item is Baymar, the cost estimate.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, as you remember, the board approved this project. They met all the conditions other than the construction cost estimate, which they provided to us. We reviewed it, went back and forth with them, they revised it again. It's now in front of you. It's pretty substantial. We're satisfied with the numbers, and we recommend that if the board's okay with those numbers, that you recommend to the town board that the construction costs be accepted, and then the bonds posted.
Yeah, I looked at it. Does the board have any comments? Max, anything? You good?
I'm good.
All right, board have any comments with that? If not, then I just need a motion to send the cost estimates to the town board. I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman. Eric made the motion, I need a second.
Second.
Mike, second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, good. Next item is, Max, I think we've got to review the, this is the local law for the short, short-term rentals?
That's correct. And, and I think we can probably address it fairly quickly. The town board is, is intending on, or is asking for your input on the proposed local law. The gist here is, is that they are looking to prohibit Airbnbs within the town. There have been some issues with that with regard to the types of uses that have resulted in impacts to the neighborhoods. So we have worked with a number of communities that were looking at Airbnb and other homeaway type, short, they're called short-term rentals. And the proposed legislation essentially would prohibit the rental of any real estate or real, real property, residential real property for less than, or for 29 days or less. So if the, if the lease term is less than 29 days, it would be a short-term rental, and therefore would be prohibited. And there's some other, you know, provisions in here that have sort of legal purposes, but that's basically the gist. I, having planned here for a while, having worked on the plan update several years ago, I know that a major concern of the community has been people affording to stay in their homes, especially in the light of, of what's happened over the years with First Morant, and I guess, I don't even know who owns that plant now, NRG.
Right.
But the reality is that the town has been looking for means for people to be able to stay in their homes. They, they, you know, looked into renting rooms and accessory apartments and home occupation. And, and this would be a means for certain people to be able to raise some revenue, stay in their homes. Additionally, the town talked about in its comprehensive plan about looking into enhancing tourism, especially as regards the history of the area, including the battlefield. And, and how do they, they sort of leverage that for economic development? So prohibiting this type of use seems to be at odds with, with that objective of, of the recent plan. So, you know, my recommendation is, is if this is intended to solve a, a short-term problem because there's no regulations on the books, and these are the types of uses that are currently impacting neighborhoods, this will certainly remedy that. But I would say on a longer-term basis, it probably makes sense for the town to take a harder look at whether or not they could figure out a way to do this well. Way that would preserve, you know, neighborhoods, would, would protect neighbors and give neighbors recourse in the event that they had somebody, you know, renting homes to disruptive people or having parties and, but that this is something that the town should probably consider, because it is a, is a place that's sought after in terms of its rural character and its history, and its proximity to the parks, frankly. So my only other recommendation with regard to this referral would be that there are certain types of sharing, sort of sharing economy uses beyond just short-term rentals of residential property. There are rentals of pools. You can actually rent somebody's pool by the hour. You can actually rent somebody's yard to camp, whether or not it's glamping, where, where there's a podium sort of in a, in a porta potty. So I would just suggest that, you know, it, it probably makes sense to adopt this type of legislation in the short term as a, as a stopgap until you think about the larger issues of residential sharing and, and short-term rentals.
All right. So what are they, what is, is this the town board wants a recommendation?
They want a recommendation from the planning board, correct?
All right. Did you write anything up, or can you, are you writing something up for us?
I, I will be writing a recommendation to the town board as, as the planner. And I could certainly write a letter on behalf of the planning board if you agree with my input tonight.
Yeah, I'll let the board members. Jerry, I'll have everyone, any, and you have any comment?
No, I agree.
Yeah, I agree. Gene?
Well, you know, I, I understand where this is coming from. But to 29 days, I mean, I'll vote for it. If we address it in the future, but 29 days, it does inhibit a legitimate person or families from obtaining some financial gain for, for whatever, you know, it's, it's, they're struggling out there, people are struggling.
Right.
I, I could see in the future, something to the fact of, it's got to be to no more than five or six or 10 people, and not more, no, a minimum of five or six days, but this is not going to happen now. So like Max said, for a stopgap, I'm all for it. But I'd like to go back to it, because 29 days is going to put everyone who's really hurting out of business for one instance that we're having in town.
Right. And, and Max, correct me if I'm wrong, if it's more than 30 days, then they're permanent, and you have a hard time of getting them out, correct?
Yeah, you can't, I mean, part of the issue is you're not allowed to zone out, if you will, rental property. If somebody wants to rent their, their home on a long-term basis, and you were to try and prohibit that in your community, you would be, I think, exposed to, and I'll defer to Mr. Shaw, but you would be exposed to a civil rights lawsuit.
Right.
So I think the idea here is by, by establishing 29 days as threshold, you're calling this short-term and transient, and you're not trying to get rid of renters from your community. You're trying to get rid of these tourist-related type uses.
Right.
Where people aren't expecting to live here on a permanent basis and reside here, they're just visiting if they're here less than 29 days or less, yeah.
Add on to that, I think the 30-day window turns it into a month-to-month tenancy, and then you have to look at the proceedings in order to get somebody out as a.
Right, that's what I was thinking. All right, good. Mark, you have any?
I, I definitely think there should be a little more discussion on this. I mean, if, if, if what we're voting on is only a short-term, you know, stopgap thing, and we can't open this up to more discussion, if the town board is amenable to that, I'm, I'm fine. But I definitely think this needs more discussion.
Right, correct. Kerry?
I, I agree with Mark. You know, if this is intended to be sort of a, a Band-Aid and a, and a short-term fix, I'm in favor of it, but I, I do think we all have to, you know, give this some more, more thought on how to address the issue.
Right, good. My, Eric, Mike? I, I agree with Kerry, Mark, and Gene, because now even the insurance companies are recognizing that people are, airport, their houses out and covering that under a basic homeowner's policy. So it is starting to become commonplace. And it's a good Band-Aid, but we have to look deeper into it. All right, good. Mike, same thing?
Yes, I agree with that.
All right, good. All right, yeah, I'm, Max, yeah, you know, write something up, everyone, you know, like you said, if it's a short-term thing to get to the town board, and then if we go into, you know, long-term discussions, that'd be great.
So I, I believe the planning board has 60 days to respond.
All right.
So I can draft the letter.
Yeah.
And consider adopting that letter at your January meeting. I think that would be within the 60 days, you know, Alex?
I, I don't know when it was referred, but I think the 60 days starts from when the, the town board referred it to the planning board.
Okay, do we have that date, Mary, on the referral form or the letter?
I have it in the office, I don't have it here, but it's been sent to everybody.
I, I pulled it up, it looks like it was October 29th.
Yeah, so that's not going to get you to January.
So I guess you could, I mean, you write it up.
Why, why don't I write a letter that says the, the planning board supports the proposed legislation only as a temporary stopgap measure, and they would like the opportunity to weigh in on a more complete law that would allow this as a use within the town?
Yeah, that sounds good. I like that.
Yeah, let's put a time limit on that of three months or six months or something.
Yeah.
Okay.
Put under the rug. And then, Mary, if you can make note of that, or Tom, you can make note of that. So we, it's, you know, we don't forget about it.
Yeah. Yeah, that sounds good, Max, just like you, exactly like you said, give them a time limit so that we don't lose that one.
Okay, I, I.
I'll put it on my calendar.
Good, thank you, Max.
Thank you.
All right, last item is minutes of October 22nd. I just need a motion to accept.
I'll make that motion.
All right, second? I'll second it. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, before I close the meeting, just wishing everyone a happy holiday. And just to echo what we've said in the past, you know, these are extraordinary times, and January, we probably will be on Zoom again. And the only way we're going to be able to communicate with the public is through the town website. So I always tell people, go to the town website, we're going to try to get as much information on there with the Zoom meetings, with documents that we have should be in the planning documents, but everything you can, I mean, the town website is the place to go. I kind of don't listen to anyone else. I mean, you saw how the Rock, the County Times posted something that we didn't even have a meeting that day. So town website, place to go for everything. And I wish everyone a happy holidays, and I need a motion to close.
I make a motion, and Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to all.
All right.
Thank you, Gene.
Need a second?
Likewise.
Eric, good. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Good. Everyone good? So we'll, Alex, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for having me.
Jennifer, thank you, have a good holiday. John, everyone, and Max, thank you. And we'll go for the tech meeting on the 14th, early, and then the special meeting on that night. So thanks, everyone. All right.
Happy holidays.
Take care.
Happy holidays all.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.